Hello and welcome to this class. I'm so happy to have you. Uh, so this is a breath work class. And I'll be discussing breath work and the benefits of breath work. The um physical, emotional, mental and spiritual benefits of breath. My name is Lenka and I'm a holistic doctor, Reiki master teacher, a breath work practitioner, Hopona Pono practitioner as well. So I love using these techniques to uh transcend a lot of the things that um that we go through in our lives and to rise higher and um uh receive more awareness, more understanding and um level up and just reach higher states of consciousness basically. So breath is one of the, one of the ways that we can rise and we can reach the, the higher levels of consciousness. So uh it's a really amazing technique and very simple to use. You don't even need anything, you just need your own body and you know some space and breath, fresh air. It's best to be outside, uh preferably in nature where you can get all the fr- fresh air that you, that you can and uh you know, just enjoy and, and um let your body be filled with this beautiful gift that we have of life. Because basically breath is life. So like when we are born, we take our first breath, you know. So breath or oxygen is what we need the most. Sure, we may need food or water and we can live a certain amount of time without those, but with breath or with oxygen, you know, there's only a very short amount of time that we can live. So breath is fundamental and it's like the number one uh need that we have. So I'm very happy to share these techniques with you and to go on a journey with you. So I learned these a few years back, actually from breatharians, from people who live just on breath. They um uh that's not to say they never eat, but they, they do eat maybe once a week or once a day, like have a smoothie in the evening or have a meal um at the end of the week or something on the weekend just for their own pleasure or their, their enjoyment. So you know, that's been uh, that's been a really interesting journey for me too. So I, I went on a, on like um eight day program uh with a breatharian and I learned all these techniques to use. We, we followed um a special diet of like liquid and fruits and then fasting as well. Uh dry fasting, water fasting to um absorb this better. So like when we have a cleaner body, uh the air gets absorbed into our, into our tissues, into our cells much better, much quicker and uh we make much better use of this um, of, of breath or for air. So and also for digestion, even when we eat or drink um, we like our body takes a lot of energy to digest the food, right? But we also need oxygen to, to digest everything that we eat, like for faster metabolism. So we need air and oxygen in so many ways and uh so anyway, like during our daily processes, our daily, daily lives, but we can make our daily experience even better and uh just much more like elated and uh euphoric and blissful actually. Like breath can take you to heights of bliss and euphoria without, you don't even need anything. You just need your nose, your lungs, your body and you know, the air. So um and you can, you're able to uh just go to like high states. So yeah, let me show you how to do it. It's um, it's really fun and uh it's just really amazing. So uh the basis of all healing and uh when I, when I heal with other techniques, with Reiki or for past life regressions, I do give past life regressions as well. So the main um idea is to relax, to fully relax your body, your mind, your emotions, your spirit, your soul. So that's the whole, whole point, like that's when your body is able to heal um the most or the best and um it's just the most effective when you're relaxed. And that's when like you're able to go deep into your own soul, into your own consciousness and um process and put together all the, all the parts that are, you know, dismembered or uh need to be brought back together. So for healing to happen, uh so the same goes for, for breath work. So it's really important to be in a relaxed state. So I'm gonna show you like standing up, but you're welcome to lay down on a bed or sofa or even sit in a chair because some of these um things that we will be doing is uh like your mind, your brain will get just full of oxygen and you may feel a little dizzy. So it's uh especially the first time, um you know, so if you, if you don't uh have much experience with this. So yeah, it's best to be in a seated position or like laying down. So okay, we can start. So I'll show you two different techniques that, that we can use. And the first one is uh so like we'll go through all the bodies, so the physical, the mental, emotional and spiritual. And we'll take seven breaths for each body. So imagine your, your whole body laying down or sitting, sitting down. Imagine it and just like go through your whole body and feel it with your, like just like sense your whole body from head to toe, all of it. And even the internal organs and all the skin and tissues and uh everything that, that um, that has manifested as a, as a physical body. And I want you to take seven breaths for your physical body. So take a deep breath in through your nose and then out through your mouth. Okay, feel how calm and relaxed you're starting to feel. Take another breath. Through your nose and then out through your mouth. Start to fall in love with yourself and with everything that's around you. It's just such a beautiful feeling. Okay, take a third deep breath through your nose and out through your mouth. Okay, feeling more relaxed. Four. Five. Six. And seven. Just feel the air just rushing, running through your body. And it may be a good idea to light a candle, burn some incense, have some flowers around, some fresh flowers, uh use some sage. It's just um, it's more pleasant. I mean, you can do it without, just with plain air, but uh it's really helpful to have some, you know, material, like some things that like smell nice around. So or you can even make an offering, flower offering. Yeah, so these things are very helpful and even help you to relax even more. So notice how we fill our bodies with air, fresh air, fresh breath. I can just feel the tingling sensations through my body and energy running, pulsating through. It's really, really nice. Through any practices, it's really important to get back into your body. What happens with trauma or with uh hurt and pain that we may feel is that we disconnect from our bodies, like our spirits, our souls start to disconnect and that's basically the death process, we start the death process. But if we want to live again, if we want to come back to life and live fully, joyfully, full of emotion, full of happiness, we need to reclaim our soul back, our spirit, to call it back and to make it feel safe in our body. So by using this breath, this is just the first step of five of the first series that I will show you. Um it's, you know, so like we get to feel our body. So we get to reclaim our, all of our parts, everything and accept and honor ourselves head to toe. So we, we get to feel our life back in our fingertips, in our toes, in our knees, in our flesh, in our legs, in our arms, in our chest, in our belly. Uh you know, because we do take belly breaths, those are better, uh just more deeper and more uh m- more cleansing, more, more healing actually. So we take belly breaths. So yeah, that, that part is also very important. And um yeah, so like we're doing this healing journey or life journey together. Okay, let's continue on to the second part. So we will call in breath or breathe for our mental body. So we all have um, you know, a brain. So and uh that's where our mind is basically uh stemming from and we can feel into our brains, into our minds and relax and refresh our mental body. So we will breathe uh seven breaths into our brain or into our mental, mental body. So let's begin. Okay, same thing, uh in through the nose, out through the mouth. So take a deep breath in. And think about your mind, think about your brain, just feel it. Feel your brain and feel how big your brain is, how, how many processes it does, how much thinking it does throughout the day, during the day, how helpful it is. Really honor your brain and your mind and give gratitude for this organ that we have, which um directs a lot of our bodily functions and it's really important to, to relax it so that it gets a break that it really deserves. And so let's breathe in more. In through the mouth, in through the nose, out through the mouth. Belly breaths, deep belly breaths. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Relax your mind, relax your brain. It does so much for you on a daily basis when we work, when we think, when we play. We use it so much, relax it. Relax it and let the air flow in. It needs oxygen for all the processes. It needs oxygen to relax as well, to heal, to recover. It's so important. We can also do some positive affirmations and send love to our brain, send love to our body. So say with me, I'm grateful for my body. I love you, my body. I'm so happy to have you. I'm so happy that you're my body. I love you, my body, I love you so much. I love you, my brain, thank you so much for being with me, for being here, for helping me to think, to make decisions. Thank you, brain, thank you, body. Thank you. I honor you, body, I honor you, brain. You're so important. I let you relax now, I let you breathe, I let you get nourishment that you need. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, I love you, I love you so much. Thank you, body. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. It's not necessary to do these um, do these extra techniques. Uh they're just helpful and just helping you relax even more. The body needs touch as well. We're focusing here on breath and on oxygen entering our body and just to do conscious breath, conscious breathing and to re- uh relearn how to, how to nourish our bodies and our brains with breath, which is the most important thing, much more important than food and water. So we want to honor everything, we want to honor the breath as well, the oxygen and everything that we receive so that we can give. We need to receive first in order to give and we also give in order to receive. It's just a beautiful cycle of life that we all, that we all participate in and it's, it's just so amazing. And if we can get into this beautiful routine of um giving and receiving and receiving this for ourselves because we often give so much, we work, we give to our workplaces, we give to our jobs, we give to our children, we give to our neighbors, give to our parents, our family, extended family, friends, we give so much. But this is like our time to, to receive and, and we must, we must receive. It's so important so that we get energized, so that we can give more. And uh we, we can give what we, you know, what we're here for. We can live our lives and, and the best version of ourselves. Okay, so yeah, we're just getting started. So we, we did the body uh and the physical body and the brain. Now it's turn, now it's time for our emotions. So obviously uh you know, when we feel low emotions like anxiety, stress, pain, uh anger, hurt, um hate or any of the lower emotions, um sadness, despair, uh depression, uh those are really low emotions, low vibrations that, that are not really healthy, like they're not really helping us to live and thrive and to um, to like, to have our health and to live in our healthy estate. So we can transform those emotions to the higher ones like love, joy and peace, but also like uh just like the positive ones are acceptance, being conscious, being aware, awareness, uh connection, uh just feeling, you know, yeah, just good, feeling good, like good feelings. So you wanna go from the bad feelings to the good feelings. And uh the way that we can do that is through breathing as well. So let's start filling our emotions with life again and getting rid of everything that doesn't serve us anymore. So think of your emotions, feel into what you're going through right now, into what you're feeling. Um is it depression or anger or despair or sadness, grief? Or is it acceptance, happiness, joy, peace, love, the high vibes? So whatever you're feeling, just uh breathe into this and uh transform them into the, the higher ones, positive ones. Okay, so same thing, will you breathe in through the nose, breathe out through the mouth? Seven breaths. Okay, let's get started. One. Two. Deep belly breaths. Three. Receive divine breath, divine life, divine joy, divine love, divine peace. Four. Move your body as you need. If, if it wants to move, just move it any way that you, that you need, that you want. Fall in love with your emotions again, be grateful for them, thank them. They're showing you, even the pain is showing you a lot. Depression is showing you to get out of situations, to make changes in your life, to be brave, to have courage, to take courage. Get rid of the fear, even the fear is showing you what you're afraid of, what your challenges are. Transform them, transmute them. Five. Six. And seven. How amazing this is. How amazing this is. When you can feel you, you can, you can feel the real you, you can get a grasp of who you are, who you truly are. Feel yourself, feel, feel the joy that is yours, the body that is yours, the emotions that are yours, the mind that is yours. Love it, expand it. Feel it, grow it. Be grateful. Gratitude is one of the best things we can do. We have so much to be grateful for, even when we feel like we're suffering, even when we feel like we're in need, even when we feel like we are lacking things, we don't have enough. We do have enough. We have so much. We have our body, we have our soul, we have our spirit, we have our heart. We have everything that's around us. We have so much pleasure and joy that we can have on a daily basis. We have so much, be grateful for everything, be grateful for every small and big thing. Be grateful. Thank the universe, thank this source, thank God for so much. Your friends, your family, for the connections, for internet, for Facebook, for this technology that we can use to communicate with each other. Be grateful for the hairs on your head, the eyes, the eyebrows, the nose, the mouth, the lips, the, the voice box that you have, that you can speak, you can communicate with others. You can do so much for your hands, they, they can work, they can connect with others, bring joy, bring pleasure. Now let's connect uh with our spiritual uh side, which is our, our soul, our spirits. So feel into uh how big your spirit is actually, which is uh really amazing. I um, when I did this for the first time, I was amazed. So feel your soul, feel your spirit. Is it as, try to see, feel into it when you're laying down, when you're sitting down or when, you know, uh the position that you're in, feel into your spirit, okay? Is it as big as your body? Is it as big as your room? Is it as big as your house? Is it as big as your city? Is it as big as your country? Is it as big as the world? Or is it even bigger than the world? Feel into it. When I did mine for the first time, actually like I uh, I felt that my spirit is bigger than the earth. I was so amazed and so surprised. Uh because I, I thought that like, who knows with spirit, like could be just as big as my heart or you know, as big as my body. I didn't realize that it could be that, that big. Uh so and I just like, I was so grateful to have such a big spirit and no wonder because um I wanted to like uh just like, I had a huge heart. I, I know that I did like for a long time and, and I was grateful to feel my spirit that big because like uh I felt connected to all the people on this planet and like, and everyone. I really felt like we're part of the collective consciousness. And um you know, we, we feel each other, you know, we really do. So feel your spirit, feel your spirit and let's feed it with oxygen, with breath. Okay, seven breaths again. So in through the nose, out through your mouth. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Belly breaths. Six. Seven. How do you feel? How do you feel now? Do you feel calm and relaxed or do you feel energized? How do you feel? Do you feel the breath flow, flowing through you? Let me know in the comments. Write me a message, write me a personal message, how you feel, how you felt. That concludes the first part of our journey together. The first uh technique that, that I use, that I learned from breath invasions and uh that I'm, I was so happy to receive. So yeah, thank you for participating with, this with me. There are other techniques that people use, like I've been to um classes where I've ex- I've received um, you know, sessions with, with other people who just like kind of breathe like for an hour. I kind of find that a little bit boring, like I, I really enjoyed, like don't mean to criticize that because that's uh, that can be good as well. And you know, I've, I've taken a lot from those classes as well. So but I really enjoyed these um, the seven breaths for the five bodies that we have. Really, really, really deeply enjoyed because it's just so specific and so um, just really amazing and we can like really focus on uh, on these five bodies. And uh it's just, I, I like it, I like this technique a lot. And then uh we can also combine it with um, with the um positive affirmations. So for the emotions, I'm grateful for my emotions, I'm so grateful. I love you, my emotions, I love you, my spirit, I love you, my soul. Thank you so much for, for being a part of me and for serving me and for just uh helping me to grow, to show me things, the emotions. Thank you for, for showing me how I feel, what resonates with me and what doesn't, what feels good, what doesn't, the path I need to take in life. Is it, is it supposed to be a challenge? Is it for my growth or is it something to get away from? A warning sign. My spirit, thank you for being my heart and my heart can be as, my soul and my spirit can be as, as big as the earth or even bigger. Thank you, I love you so much. Thank you that you serve, that you, you are connected to others for the, thank you that you are connected to the whole planet, to all the people on this planet, that we can feel each other's joys and our, feel each other's sufferings and pains, feel, feel each other's excitements, feel each other's peace, that we can be connected. It's so beautiful and so lovely and so amazing. Thank you so much for this, thank you. I bless you, I bless you, my body, I bless you, my mind, I bless you, my emotions, I bless you. I bless you. I bless you, my body. I bless you, my mind. I bless you, my emotions. I bless you, my spirit. Thank you. Uh affirm with me, I am love. I am peace. I am joy. I am happiness. I am tranquility. I am divine. I am fun. I am excitement. I am life. I am health. I am happiness. Thank you so much for participating and then I will go to the next part of this class, of this session. Thank you so much. I'm so happy that you're with me, that you can receive this and I can share this with you. It makes me really, really, really happy. Thank you so much. Okay, so the next part of this session is. Um how to do accelerated breaths. So in the first part, we went over uh the technique that is um. Going through the fi- uh over the five bodies that we have and filling each of them with seven breaths. Deep belly breaths and with oxygen so that we can flow, we can have life, we can have joy, we can have peace, we can be. High lifted up, eli- elevated, elated. We can vibe in high frequency, we can. Have energy, so much energy, natural energy, um that we just get from breath. Uh sure, we, we eat, we have drink, but um breath, oxygen is what we need the most. And um, you know, we can sweeten our experience with uh having some fresh flowers around so that, you know. Oxygen or fresh breath already smells good, but we can, we can even heighten our experience with um. Having pleasant things around like, you know, sage. I do, I do have some sage. You can have incense, you can make offerings uh with flowers and uh, you know, just like. Um make this a celebration, make this uh connective experience and. Make this um a ceremony for yourself, uh honoring yourself and honoring life, honoring. Everything that's around you, this beauty that we have, this life that we can live. Okay, so then I will teach you the accelerated breath technique, which is uh, you know. In this technique, like with this technique, you can reach bliss and joy and happiness, like basically euphoria just with. Just with your breath. You can do this at any time, during the day, morning, night, anytime, so. Okay, so the way it goes is um. Like this, um this, for this technique, like you only use your mouth, you don't really use your nose. And um you just start breathing, so it's best to be lying down or sitting down, preferably lying down. Because just like I had uh with my experience when I was um. When I trained with uh, um I received this training from uh Breathirian. Um so I was, I had to be laying down, like I was just going through like these like. These states of like uh huge euphoria and um bliss actually. So you can, you can lay down for this, it's preferred. So what you do is um, okay, you just like use your mouth and you. It's accelerated breath, so you start uh kind of um, you know, slower and then you speed up, you go faster. So let's try this. Okay, ready? Alright, so it goes like this. You can close your eyes, just because. You know, you don't have to like look at everything around you, you can just really focus in on yourself and your own experience, just like. Get in, get into your heart, get into your, your soul and your, your mind, into your body. And receive, receive all this with pleasure, with joy. Okay, let's continue. Okay, so slower and then go faster. If you yawn, you may yawn. And that's a good sign, that's a, that's a sign that your body is relaxing and it's releasing and it's just like letting go of. Kind of this um conscious awareness and just going into like a more relaxed state and to just like. Perceiving and, and relaxing and receiving. So that's okay, you can yawn, that's uh, that's a good release. It's a good yawn. It doesn't even mean that you're tired, you may be tired, like. I'm slightly tired, not so much, I'm pretty much awake right now, but. I mean, I could use some extra sleep, but you know, I'm okay, but the yawn, it's always like a good sign of just relaxation. Take as much as you can, as much, let your body fill with life, fill with oxygen, fill with joy. You may even fall asleep after this, just may put you to sleep. And that's okay, just take all the rest, relaxation that you need. You need it, you deserve it. Oh, I can feel it in my nose, in my face, like this deep sense of relaxation, deep, deep, deep. I can feel it in my brain, this is deep stuff. The first technique that we did, that was um. That was much milder, this is, this is intense, pretty heavy. On the healing side, on the relaxing side. Expand, expand your lungs. Stretch your breath, stretch your lungs, stretch your body, expand your heart, open your heart. And now allow yourself to speed up and to receive more and more and more. This is going into your lungs, going into your belly, just receive, receive. Become one with the breath, become one with the divine, with consciousness. Receive the bliss. Feel the breath pulsating through your body. Till you breathe it all out. You receive the breathlessness. You may sweat, like I'm sweating right now. It's a bit of a workout as well, yogic practice, it's called pranayama. When we receive this breath and just like feel the breathlessness when you, just for a few seconds. Don't even breathe and feel the breath vibrating through your whole body. It's amazing, it's amazing, so cleansing, so clarifying. Breathe it all. Let it run through your body. This is life giving, this is energizing. This is so amazing, this is so healthy. So healthy, I'm so grateful for this technique, for this, for this breath, for this life, for this health. It's just so nice, I love this, I love this. How do you feel? Let me know in the comments. Let me know your experience. You can repeat this, like usually when um, when I do just one of these. I just like, I get on this high and I just like, I feel so connected to everything around me, to myself, to. Nature, to, you know, people, I just like feel the pulse of life, feel the freshness, feel the energy. I just, I feel so energized that it's uh, it's enough to do this in the morning or in the evening, just to. Get me through the day on a, a high energy and um, and also like it fills my mind with uh freshness and brightness. It really heightens my intuition. That um, you know, when you, when you do this, you're able to focus much better. Because like obviously you have oxygen, so it's scientific, this is pure science, this is not just spiritual, this is not just. Some emotions or, or some uh, you know, new age technique, like this is real stuff, like we need this, like. The divine gave us life, breathed life into us and. So grateful for this uh, yes. So grateful for this, for this experience, for this connection with you. Try it again, the accelerated breath, you can try as many times as you want or as you need. It's just um. It's amazing, the more you do it, the more energized you feel and, you know, honestly, like when I went through the Breathirian training. Um I just, I really saw and I really uh realized like how they can live on breath. Like how, how much it fills you and, fills you with the positive emotions, the mind space, the clear mind space. The clarity in your body, the energy in your body, and in your spirit, it gives you power, it gives you strength. Um I could, I could see how they just kind of eat this for breakfast, eat this for lunch, eat this. You know, breathe this for dinner, you know, like it's uh really, really, really amazing and, and I was so. Glad to experience that, I was really, really happy to receive this. So yeah, it's um, so I was really ha- happy to um, share this with you. And um, yeah, let me know how you feel, uh send me a message, uh if you want more of these videos or like uh. Private sessions or if you would like um, you know, more regular times. Scheduled times when we can have classes together. Uh let me know because I would be happy to, to be of service and to, to share this with you. Thank you so much. With divine grace, divine love, divine peace. Thank you.